Twenty for April fifth will come to order. Ms. Celeste, give a roll call, please.
Mr. Abruzzo.
I am present.
Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Cardello?
Yeah.
Mayor Di Maria?
Here. Here.
Ms. Lambert?
Present.
Mr. La Monica?
Yeah.
Ms. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Panerisi? Ms. Sarni?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Parker?
Yeah. Okay, we have a quorum. Could you please all rise and salute the flag?
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if I can just to the our IHT folks, can we the the computers that are being used, can we have the screenshot off, please, when you get a moment? Okay, so with that, Roman numeral three, reading the record.
I make a motion to waive the reading of the records and place on file.
Second.
Okay, the motion is made a second to waive the reading and place it on file. Can a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abruzzo?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi? Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Yes, ten in the affirmative, you've placed on file. Item number four, please.
I make a motion to open public comment.
Second.
Okay, motion is made in second to open public comment. Can a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abruzzo?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi? Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, standing in affirmative. We are now over for public comment. And do we have? Do we have any guest? Oh, I'm sorry. Before we start, I want to recognize Diana Lewis is on board tonight. She's our student rep. And can you have her noted as being in attendance as a matter of record, please? Welcome, Ms. Lewis. Okay, I'm sorry, public comment, can we continue? Do we have anybody?
I do not see the two individuals that requested the link. But we do have one person in the waiting room. Give me one second.
Yeah.
Ms. Burnell, you're on for public comment.
Hi, good evening. If you please state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Bernaliana Madores. I'm Aliana's mother.
Oh, so you're not here for public comment. You're here for, okay.
Right, I answered you back in the chat.
Okay.
Yep.
So at this time, we don't have anyone for a public comment.
Okay, what is the, what are the wishes of the body?
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to close public comment. Ms. Celeste, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abruzzo?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi? Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ten in the affirmative.
Yes.
Public comment. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you so much. How am I on sound? Can everybody hear me? Okay. So Roman numeral five is the report of the superintendent, and the first item is the superintendent's update as usual. I just wanted to say good evening to everyone, Chairman Parker, all of the school committee members, and everyone at home. I hope you all enjoyed the holiday weekend as much as we enjoyed welcoming back all of our students today for K-5 for in-person learning. So tonight's update has several different components and reflects the changing nature of this school year. We are going to cover a lot of ground from Crimson Tide Athletics to district-wide fundraising efforts and also to essential information about the rollout of in-person learning. So we are going to dive right in with our first bright spot of the evening. And that speaks to our guests that we have this evening, so I wanted to congratulate Kavarian student Aliana Anna Madores for earning honorable mention in this year's Massachusetts Partnership for Youth poster and Public Service Announcement, so the PSA project. And at this time, I would like to bring forward Margie Daniels from Massachusetts Partnership for Youth and Aliana, along with her family, to be presented with this amazing award.
I'll make a motion to bring Aliana and all the guests as well.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, on this motion made in second to bring them forward, if I just get a thumbs up. Thank you. If our guest could please come forward, please?
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Well, thank you very much, Superintendent. I want to say what an honor and privilege it is to be here before the Everett School Committee. I've been here, I've this is a new superintendent that I know you're delighted to be working with. I've heard such wonderful things. And I just want to let you know that through the years, I've been a guest at the Everett School Committee meeting many times for this exact purpose. The Everett Public Schools has had a huge presence in Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth, both Public Service Announcement Contest and the Poster Project for many, many years. And aside from your great participation in our contests, so many people attend our webinars and our in-service training, so I really want to compliment you on the way that your staff is utilizing the services that we provide regarding prevention and intervention in matters of health and safety for for youth. We have over 200 members across Massachusetts now, and I can very honestly say that Everett is absolutely one of my favorite districts. So it's really a pleasure to be here tonight. The the contest was very, very well received in Massachusetts. We had, I think, slightly over 215 entries. So to receive an honorable mention in that in that group of very, very excellent entries is fabulous. We had an unbiased group of judges participate. They did not know what districts the students came from. We had school administrators, we had police chiefs, we had representatives in terms of psychologists, social workers, guidance counselors, and some people also from the business world joined us too. So we had a robust group of judges. The contest this year, the theme of it was "We Stand Together", which we felt was a very, very appropriate topic this year with the racial reckoning that's going on very appropriately in the United States and really putting an emphasis on how we can come together to support each other. We certainly have been through a tough year with the pandemic, and I'm so happy to hear that you're opening up again. My own grandchildren are going back as of today. And the, I don't know if you want me to show the poster, but it is phenomenal. Absolutely. If I hold it up, you see it? So I have to, yes, I have to say, you have a very, very talented student at the Kavarian School. And I know that Aliana's in the fifth grade, and the teacher is Eric Piazza. So I want to congratulate everyone on behalf of just this wonderful effort. And I wish I could be in person with you, Aliana, to shake your hand and congratulate you, but I want you to know that we're sending you an Amazon gift certificate along with a certificate of achievement. So that should be coming to your mom shortly, if not already. So again, I thank you very much for the honor and pleasure of being here, and congratulations on having such a talented student. And also congratulations to the Everett Public Schools just for your great participation in general. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels, and thank you, Aliana, for being here today with your family. Thank you to Mr. Piazza and to Principal Nauman for also joining us to celebrate with Aliana. So we really appreciate having you here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, so now we're going to turn to the basketball court. Coach Riley Dunn and the Crimson Tide Girls Basketball Team captured the 2021 Greater Boston League Championship by defeating hosts Lynn English from 47 to 41 on Saturday. So this was preceded by dominating victories over Somerville and Medford in the quarterfinals and semifinals respectively. The boys' team also made it to Saturday's title game versus Lynn English, falling to the Bulldogs by just four points, 75 to 71. So I wanted to congratulate Coach Stanley Chamberlain and his team for an exceptional season that was punctuated by dominating wins over Revere and Lynn Classic in their two playoff wins prior to Saturday's game. I would also like to mention the senior members of our basketball teams who played in their final games in the Crimson over the weekend. So Maya Kernan and Ashley Fitzgerald for Coach Dunn's team, Kevin Arist, Edwin Francois, Rove Bryce, and Juvence Lewis for the boys. And you know, of all the positives of being able to play, even in a modified sports season, you know, our seniors are definitely at the top of that list. Every senior should get to see their high school careers come to an end where they should on the court, on the field, on the ice. So we were so happy that they were able to finish out their their season. In that light, I did want to also remind everyone that Crimson Tide Hockey Team will hold its senior night tomorrow prior to its game versus Lynn at the Veterans Memorial Rink. We will try to livestream the senior night on our EHS Athletics website. The broadband access inside the rink may not allow for this, but we are doing our best, and we will most definitely post a recording of the senior night festivities and the game on Wednesday after, if we're not able to livestream it. I just also want to thank our TV studio crew who helps us here tonight and with those live streaming of our sporting events. So that includes Josh Delgazo, Bill Munier, and Joseph Camley for livestreaming all of our games during the winter season and helping support us here at the school committee meetings. So as many of you know, Friday, April 2nd was World Autism Awareness Day, and EPS celebrated the event on Thursday, as there was no school on Good Friday. Countless teachers and staff members and students wore blue on Thursday to commemorate World Autism Awareness Day. And in addition, hundreds of our employees joined an annual Genes Day fundraiser organized by EPS educator Stephen Patonod in honor of his son Nate. So proceeds will directly benefit the New England Center for Children and the Sunday Swim Program, which offers classes for our children with special needs. I just want to thank everybody who participated in last week's fundraising and awareness efforts. They are so meaningful, and I think they're, you know, encouraging indicators that we're getting back to doing things that help define our mission and values. I also wanted to take the opportunity to announce that the district is planning a slate of activities for a full week from April 26th through May 1st to promote awareness and understanding of the disabilities of our students while also recognizing and celebrating their unique abilities as well. So we're in the process of planning our schedule, and we will share complete details when they are finalized. So next is a brief update on a creative fundraiser we held on Wednesday, March 31st called Checks and Pearls Day. So the effort generated tremendous district-wide participation and a significant number of donations for the Waves Clubs Period Project. So EHS Medical Assistant Instructor Desiree Peary introduced the idea, and staff throughout the district wore their sneakers or pearls last Wednesday. And those who participated were asked to make a donation to the period project through the online wish list that the Wave Club has established. So people could also join the effort by wearing purple to represent justice and dignity, or green to signify hope. And like any successful fundraiser, the biggest benefactor was that worthy cause, which in this case was the Period Project, which advisors Amanda Gill and Nicole Coppola talked about during our last school committee meeting. And as they mentioned, again, this this project is because of the lack of access to feminine hygiene products, which then has adverse effects on females related to their confidence, health, and education. And the Period Project is designed to directly help address that issue. So in recent weeks, and culminating with the Checks and Pearls Day, the Wave Club has received enough donations to make 3,650 period kits. So donations came from innumerable EPS and City of Everett employees and friends and family. And special thanks as well to the Elliott Family Resource Center and the employees and members of CrossFit Route One for their particularly generous donations. Checks and Pearls Day was also the culminating event of our Women's History Month, which the Waves celebrated with a series of different events, which can also be found at the web address that is listed above and on our website. So today, or actually last week, was our first week of full-time in-person teaching and learning as we brought back our students in our substantially separate classrooms. And, you know, it was really exciting and energizing to be in those buildings and to experience, you know, the bustle of the buildings, which has, in many senses, been absent for quite a long time. You know, we've lost an indescribable amount during the pandemic, but I feel like we're finally beginning to fill those voids, recapture routines, and feel the buzz and excitement of being in a school building that's full of staff and students as they are meant to be. The feedback we're receiving from teachers about their students returning to school has been, was very positive last week. And then today, when we welcome back K-5, the students are just so thrilled to be back. They're transitioning well into their new routines, and it is clear that they've been long awaiting these moments. And I just wanted to thank our teachers who are not only focusing on the protocols, procedures for safety, but on academics and also on the social, emotional well-being of their students as they move from remote learning to in-person instruction. I know this is incredibly, you know, they're just doing so many different things right now, our teachers, and I feel like they're handling all of them so well. And we just appreciate so much how much they are doing to support our students and to make our transition back to school seamless. So I have a couple of important updates. So this is a reminder for our Everett High School families. We are hosting a free virtual FAFSA information session or sessions on Wednesday, April 14th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. Parents and guardians can visit the address listed above and reserve a one-on-one FAFSA appointment with an advisor from the Massachusetts Educational Opportunity Center. So the free application for federal student aid, or FAFSA, is the form that families use to apply for financial aid for college. And I definitely implore families to take advantage of these sessions to help learn about, you know, this important and sometimes very stressful and complicated process. So it'll be great to be able to get, you know, one-on-one support for the FAFSA. So this event is being organized by the Everett High School Guidance Department in conjunction with the Educational Opportunity Center and Massachusetts Education and Career Opportunities, which is the Commonwealth's largest provider of community-based education and career readiness services for our underrepresented middle and high school students and adults. So this upcoming week, we are hosting our second round of English Language Parent Advisory Committee Meetings, or LPAC meetings of the year. So the Haitian Creole LPAC will meet on Tuesday, so tomorrow, followed by the Portuguese meeting on April 7th, and the meeting that will occur in Spanish on April 8th, all beginning at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom. This slide actually was created and designed by an officer from our Spanish LPAC, Uri Yepes, which she will present on Thursday at her meeting to highlight the importance of family involvement and parent engagement. You know, it is very important to highlight that, you know, the LPAC is going exactly as we had hoped that it would and that this this week's agendas were actually developed by the LPAC officers. And they reflect the wishes of their linguistic communities and the information that they want to receive from us and the conversations they want to have. So the officers actually met with the EPS family liaisons to discuss the most requested topics that they're hearing from their communities and to ensure that the agendas are as relevant as possible. So for example, the Spanish officers requested an EHS guidance counselor to discuss the social, emotional supports that will be available for students once they return. The Haitian Creole officers asked Special Education Director William Donahue to talk about the different programs that are available to students on individualized education plans. And the Portuguese-speaking officers suggested an update on the MCAS exams and any differences between this year and a typical school year. So again, they're very tailored to exactly what those communities are specifically asking to hear about right now. The LPAC officers who were elected in the fall have played a vital role in not only generating interest within the linguistic communities, but then also providing that feedback to us on on agenda, the agenda items. They are incredibly diligent in everything they're doing to promote the EPS events and to connect families with each other and our schools. And we just want to thank them for for taking on these these roles in order to better support us and to to create a greater bridge between us and our communities. So a reminder to our families that PEBT, the federal program created last year to provide food assistance during the pandemic, is going to continue through this summer. Families who have a PEBT card should keep it and continue to use it. We will pass on more information about the extension of the program when it is released by the Department of Transitional Assistance, or DTA. So the district's outreach efforts have been, you know, extensive and for the most part, successful of our more than 7,000 students, more than 6,000 have accessed nutritional assistance since the pandemic began. Benefits which are stored on a debit card are about $100 per month. So we're now reaching out to approximately 500 of our families who have enrolled in the program and have access to funds that they need to use. So that's what we're working on right now. Another great thing about the PEBT program is that since all of our students are eligible, if a family does not need the benefit, they can actually use their PEBT card to purchase food for food pantries, which have provided critical services to our community during the pandemic. So as students transition back to school, families are encouraged to check their eligibility and to also apply for SNAP, which is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, which is not actually related to the pandemic. The mechanics of the two programs are similar. That is that families receive a card that can be used for food shopping on a monthly basis. So the PEBT and SNAP benefits are ones that our families should look into. And for anybody who has any questions, they can visit dtacconnect.com or call the DTA Assistance Hotline at 877-382-2363, or Project Bread's Food Source Hotline at 800-645-8333. And or again, they can always just contact us, and we will make sure to provide the information to them to get them connected with the DTA. And our final update is regarding our meals distribution. So now that full-time in-person teaching and learning has begun, we do have some changes to announce regarding our meals distribution program. So first and foremost, starting today, we began giving breakfast to students as they leave school for the next morning. So again, this breakfast is for the following day. Students will receive a breakfast on Friday afternoon for Monday. So we are doing this in large part from an operational standpoint. Simply, it is, you know, more orderly and safer for our school leaders to be able to allow the students to have their breakfast at home and to focus on our lunch period guidelines so that we can make sure that we're maintaining our COVID health and safety measures. Lunch will also be served every day while school is in session. We will be doing that and following all of the lunch protocols that have been established by school principals and leaders and the state. And, you know, depending on our space considerations and the number of students in their classrooms, we will have students who are going to larger spaces in order to eat. And today, when I visited some of the schools, you know, we originally planned that many of the students would eat in their classrooms. However, there have actually been many of our school leaders who've been able to to buy the opportunity for students to safely go to the cafeteria or the gymnasium. We're also, because of the now lunch and breakfast that is being provided during the school day to our students who are in person, we're also changing the dates and times of our meals to go distribution. So this is for our remote students, and we want to make sure they can continue to access that. So starting today, we are distributing the breakfast and lunch every school day from 2:30 to 3:30 p.m. at the following locations that are listed on this slide, slide that at Everett High School's front entrance, at the English Schools' front D entrance, at the Kavarian's back parking lot B entrance, at the Lafayette's front D entrance, at the Parlin Schools' back parking lot entrance, at the Webster's back entrance through the playground, and at the Whittier Schools' main entrance. So a remote meal distribution, and at remote meal distribution on Fridays, children will be provided with their meals for the next Monday and through the weekend. We also just want to remind everyone that children do not need to be present to pick up those meals for remote distribution, and parents and guardians can pick up meals on behalf of their children. And lastly, families do not need to go to their child's school in particular. They can pick up at whichever site is most convenient for them. All right, so shifting gears, here is our regular update on attendance. We are now approaching three consecutive months in which approximately 95% of our students are boasting daily attendance rates of 90 to 100%, which is great. So this chart shows that more than 1,400 of our students continue to have 100% attendance, while more than 4,100 more are in the 90 to 99 percentage category. The chart on the right shows our daily absences, which continue to be consistent with our historical averages for absences. And obviously, as we move forward and our instructional models change, we will continue to closely monitor our attendance figures as students transition from full in-person teaching and learning or into full in-person teaching and learning to ensure that we are, you know, reaching all of our students. So Everett COVID data continues to show the growing trend of daily positive cases ranging from the single digits to more than 40. We have seen an increase from our February lows, but our figures do continue to be lower than they were after the holidays. More specific information is in this next slide where we focus on our two key metrics, the daily incidence rate and percent positivity. So our district is now in the red, high-risk category for the first time since February, according to the criteria of both the state and the Centers for Disease Control. So we do view this as an important reminder that mitigation measures continue to be essential, that we, you know, have to remain vigilant. This means the use of face coverings and the consistent practice of our at least three feet of physical distancing. It also means using self-screening measures and staying at home if you are showing any symptoms. So the rise in cases are not according to health experts and indication that our schools are unsafe. So this is a trend that we are seeing all around Massachusetts. And from what we are hearing, you know, Massachusetts, in seeing this increase in virus cases among those under, have been seeing these raises in virus cases among those under 30 in recent weeks. One obvious reason for this is obviously that more students are attending schools, educational collaborative, special education programs, after-school programs, et cetera. Another potential explanation for the rise in cases is that the Commonwealth's cost-effective and wide-ranging pool testing program has been operating in hundreds of schools. And so, you know, as we test more, we identify more, which is good, but definitely raises our positivity rates. In published reports last week, Russell Johnston, who's the Senior Associate Commissioner at Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, said that what he would want parents to do is just to put this into the broader context, that school numbers going up does not mean that schools are not safe, in fact, that they are very safe. However, here in Everett, as we have done all school year, we will continue to monitor our metrics very closely and provide regular updates at these meetings. You know, I think all year we have been very flexible, and we have, you know, we've adjusted as we needed to, and, you know, I think that that doesn't change as we enter this last stretch of the school year. And we do expect that, you know, despite our most diligent efforts, we are going to have positive cases within our schools that do result in students having to temporarily return to remote learning. In fact, this has already occurred, and while it is disappointing and inconvenient, you know, And while it is disappointing and inconvenient, you know, we are at least reassured, you know, by the ability to provide in-person instruction where we can and by the robust processes we have put into place to ensure that we're doing effective contract tracing, which is also relying on the fact that we are intentionally rewarding our students in a very consistent manner. So we, as always, you know, we try to provide some sort of hard data about what is happening in the Everett Public Schools. Here we have a breakdown of the percentage of students who returned to our substantially separate classrooms for in-person learning last week. The English, Lafayette, Webster and Webster Extension all returned between 70 and 75% of their students. And, you know, I think that 70% number is pretty telling district-wide. The lower percentages at the Devens and EHS in doing further research is attributable in large part to the health and safety considerations among our older cohorts of students. So those are the two schools that do have students who are in the, in grades, you know, nine through 12. So that's certainly, you know, something we want to consider as we are considering and deciding on a date for bringing back our high schoolers. So as of today, 70% of our students in grades K through five opted to return to school while 30% are continuing with our remote model. So the straight numbers are 1,990 who are back in class physically while 871 are at home. So when we presented the first round of K to five percentages on March 15th, the breakdown was 6634. So we did actually see an uptick over the last two weeks of families saying yes to in-person learning. We have not found any great anomalies within this overall breakdown. You know, we always do break down the numbers in multiple different ways. So, you know, the numbers are not necessarily skewed by, say, an overwhelming response in one or two particular grade levels, nor are the percentages greatly differing from school to school. So there were no, nothing that stood out as something that we wanted to note for all of you. You will see differences, you know, when you are walking through the classrooms from class to class. In fact, I was at a Parlin kindergarten classroom this morning where 100% of the students returned. So those percentages definitely changed from classroom to classroom. But overall, school-wide and grade-wide, it's about the same. And of the families who actually opted for in-person teaching and learning, 82% said that they will participate in voluntary testing programs we offer. So we did want to note that. So the percentage of parents who said yes greatly increased over the past two weeks, actually. So originally, that number was 63% as we recorded it on March 15th. So again, we want to thank all our parents for being so amenable and, you know, continuing to update this information as we know that, you know, we are all kind of assessing as we go and determining what is going to work best for our families and our students. And so we appreciate them constantly staying in communication with us and letting us know where they are and what they feel comfortable with. So I wanted to provide a quick update regarding our after-school program, which is understandably a key consideration for families who want to settle back into as traditional a work schedule as possible. So after-school is also a vitally important part of our long-range planning and overall vision for our district as well. So, you know, I have been, I think, vocal throughout the year in my reservations about after-school programming ever since we started to implement our reopening plan, if for no other reason than it involves students moving among cohorts. So I have spoken to parents and teachers who are concerned about this fundamental, you know, reality. And I'm also worried about what after-school participation does to pool testing as it is dependent on a consistent membership among groups. However, I've also heard from many people for whom after-school is crucially important and necessity even. So we're hearing it on both the ends of the spectrum. So in the end, because we are committed to providing the supports that our students and families need, we are in contact with the program for kids only regarding providing services to our students after school. And we do hope to solidify plans that will allow us to dismiss students directly from our school buildings to FKO buses as early as next week. I do want to dispel any rumors that existed that we would actually begin that process this week as it does require a good deal of planning and collaboration. So first, we need to, you know, establish large-scale contact tracing protocols like we have done at a very small scale with Molden YMCA, for example. We also want to share and maintain information such as seating, pot organizational charts, student schedules, rosters. And then secondly, we really needed this week in order to ensure that the dozens of things that we have put into place are working as they were meant to. Because if they're not, you know, we have this week to troubleshoot and fix them. So our school leaders were very clear. And, you know, we know that we wanted to respect our staff as well, that they need this week to monitor, assess, discuss every facet of our operation at the school and district level. This includes everything we do, including our dismissal procedures and processes. So after this week, I think we'll be far better positioned to help facilitate the process of safely connecting our students with an FKO employee once that final bell rings and we will be working with them this week to solidify that. You know, as we learned, you know, long ago that the COVID-related decisions rarely are coming without any concessions. So I do want to thank our families for their patience as we attempt to, you know, metaphorically walk before we run. You know, as a school system, it is our foremost responsibility to ensure that we are executing our game plan correctly and consistency consistently. And I look forward to meeting with them this week to make sure that they will be a vigilant partner in helping us maintain our number-one objective, which is of course to continue to offer full-day in-person teaching and learning during this core school day to every student who wants it. And to end, I did want to talk about what families can expect in the next few weeks. So students in pre-kindergarten and grades six, seven and eight will be returning, can return for in-person teaching and learning five days a week beginning on Monday, April 26th. So schools will begin to distribute the learning choice form that was distributed to K to five earlier. So that form for six to eight and pre-K will be distributed this week so that families can let us know if they will be returning to in-person instruction or if they will be remaining in remote learning. And we respectfully ask all pre-K and six to eight students and guardians to make sure to fill out one form per student. If you haven't received it from your school leaders by later this week, to please reach out. K to five parents also, we just want to remind, I know I feel like I say this over and over, but I just want to make sure that everyone knows that K to five parents who decide that they do want to switch to remotely learning from in-person learning always have the opportunity to do that. K to five parents who have decided that they want to switch from remote to in-person will have the chance to do so on April 26th with an enrollment form that will be coming out next week. So as a reminder, again, students can transition from in-person to remote at any time, but remote to in-person does require an enrollment process. We are still, as I mentioned before, awaiting DESI guidance concerning high school. So we continue to make preparations for our EHS students. And I think we will be in a position to respond to any directives from the state when they are released this month. But in the meantime, you know, we are preparing an interest form that will be going out to our EHS students and families just to gauge interest in full-time learning among ninth through 12th graders. And we think this form will greatly just help us from a planning and operational standpoint as we, you know, pivot to the high school. Any pivot to the high school level will need to be made relatively quickly as we only have a few weeks left of school or a few months left of school. So again, we don't know if DESI will be as definitive about high school as they were about K to eight. Again, that's understandable, given the fact that the health considerations are different for our older students than they are at the elementary level. And obviously, we will share as much information as we receive about EHS in the coming weeks. But for now, we are very thrilled that our K to five classrooms are open and we're equally excited about seeing our pre-kindergartners and our sixth to eighth graders coming back later this month. And I think that brings me to the end of my presentation. So I thank you as always for your time and attention and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm through to the superintendent. And you actually did address this, but I wanted to specifically ask if any student population was overrepresented in the remote, students in the K through five or special ed, whether socioeconomic race or language spoken at home?
I did. So if you're, as you adjust, I can answer it. So the question was, you know, somewhat answered in the presentation, but just, you know, to ask about whether or not any groups are, have been disproportionately represented in either the remote or in-person model. So whether we're looking at, I think I mentioned grade and school, but Ms. Lambert is specifically speaking to English learners, you know, students who are on IEPs, students in low socioeconomic status households. So we have disaggregated the data several different ways. Originally, when we were looking at the data of who was interested in coming back, we actually did see that, for example, many of our English, our English learner families were definitely demonstrating more interest in returning than other families. However, interestingly enough, that actually did shift and to make it more equal. So we are seeing an equal percentage of students in all of these different groups. And I think it kind of goes back to that idea that this is a very, you know, individualized decision for every family and that there are a lot of considerations in play when families are making these decisions. And, you know, I think it'll be interesting to see too, as we move forward, how many more families enroll or if there are families who choose to, you know, return to remote learning. So we'll be looking at those numbers too. But for now, we were actually, you know, pretty surprised that some of the trends that we had seen earlier have kind of evened out.
And just, if could offer some assurance for parents who've still...
We are transitioning Mrs. Lambert's desk for better audio.
Sorry for the interruption. Can you hear me now?
It's better.
Better.
So I was just going to ask if you could offer some reassurance. I know there's been some concern from families that opt to stay remote. That there'll be more challenges for them. So if you could just give a little more detail regarding...
Absolutely. So the question was, you know, if we could provide some, you know, assurance or just information to families who are remaining remote.
Regarding mitigations there are for our zoomies.
Yeah, sorry, that was on a delay. So yes, to make sure that all of our students are able to engage or able to be supported. So, you know, I was able to walk through classrooms today and you did see, you know, differences in the classrooms and how they're set up. You saw differences in classrooms and how many students were remote. But I think one commonality was that you saw both groups engaging. There were student, there were classrooms where, you know, the zoomies were facing the roomies and you could see them. There were classes where the zoomies were just facing their teacher and interacting with them in a small group. So I think that teachers are utilizing a variety of different methods. What I would say for all families is that, you know, our teachers have been incredibly flexible and, you know, adjust very quickly to, you know, the needs that they, the varying needs that they've met throughout this year. So if there is any concern as time passes and as we've settled into this new model that, you know, you need extra support, you need extra engagement or that you do feel like there is a disparity between those who are zoomies and roomies, I would definitely encourage those families to reach directly out to their teacher. I think all of the teachers have been, that is one of their concerns and they are trying very hard to make sure that both groups are equally engaged. But I also know that they are willing to receive feedback and willing to, you know, adjust if their, again, dynamics change from classroom to classroom and student to student. But I do have utmost faith in the fact that I know our teachers are trying very hard and there is going to be a little bit of a learning curve at this time. So please to make sure to communicate with your teacher if there is something that's not working or could be working better.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Mrs. Lambert?
No, thank you.
Okay, so I have Ms. Lewis and then Ms. Cardello. Ms. Lewis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam Superintendent, for the special presentation. So I have two questions. How are the rising cases in schools being monitored? And is there like a space limit? For example, like, is there a limit to how many forms you're accepting in regards to like students returning?
That's a great question. So to answer the second one first, so we are able to at three feet accommodate all of our students. I think because we've had not 100% of our students return, that's why we've been able to make some adjustments. So for example, we originally thought that students would be eating in the classroom and that half of the students would be taken out. Because it's less students than we had originally expected or not 100% of students, we've been able to make adjustments to where they can all go into a bigger classroom. However, I do think that that's going to shift once our middle schoolers return and once more students start to enroll. But we are fully able to accommodate all of our students at three feet. And as we have less students, we just, you know, utilize all the space that we have to kind of expand that spacing where we can. As for the monitoring of increased cases, we are already seeing it in our school buildings. And we do have a protocol for, you know, when we find out a case, you know, our health and wellness coordinator does do their contact tracing. We have our cohorts very clear in all of the classrooms that I went into. Teachers or students are assigned to their seats that are always their desks. So we're trying to keep it very regimented so that, again, we can contact trace to determine how many close contacts there are. So for example, we have seen that not only the number of COVID positives have increased, but also the number of close contacts, which we've seen in other districts as they've returned. It has been the trend. And, you know, we are taking them case by case, cohort by cohort. And for example, we did have to return some cohorts to remote learning temporarily during a quarantine period because of the number of close contacts that we found in those classes. So we do continue to monitor it and I will make sure to give updates. There have been, in the past, we've given updates on the number of COVID cases that we've seen in our schools. And I will, at our next presentation, give kind of that overall view so you can see how it's expanded because we're definitely seeing more. And I do want to make sure that the community is completely, you know, aware that we're being transparent about what that looks like so that everybody can feel comfortable. We do also send out notifications to our entire, you know, community when we do have COVID positives. So families are not receiving those or you're not receiving emails or letters that your, you know, other parents in your school may be receiving to please let the school leader know so that they can add you to the list and that you're always well-informed when there's a COVID case in your school building or any close contacts in your school building.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Cardello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the superintendent. Good evening, Madam Superintendent. I have three questions for you and two of them are to do with COVID testing. And these are both coming, all three of these are from parents. And I'm sorry, I'm reading them because I don't want to make...
You admitted yourself.
Sorry about that. Thank you. These are coming from parents. Sorry about that. Thank you. These are coming from parents, so I'm reading it directly off the note here. Would you please explain once again how it is determined who will be part of the pool testing?
So yes, the pool testing is based on two different things. It's based on, obviously, the opt-in to that testing. So we do have to have permission to test and the cohort that the students are in. So what you're doing when you're pool testing is you're testing a single cohort that is together in order to see if anybody comes back positive. If in that pool test you do have a positive, that's when you do the rapid testing in order to determine who in the, in the pool is positive.
Thank you. That answers that one. And on the rapid testing, before those, would we be, and this is my question, would we be determining that all of those in that cohort needed to go home at that point in quarantine until we know for sure, or we just wait until after the pool testing or the rapid test?
You know, it also, it, it, so we do have guidelines for each of these, and I hate to talk in absolutes just because we have so many, we have flow charts of this, and then this, and then this. So we do have processes in place where we have the pool positive, where we do the rapid testing, and then the students would quarantine thereafter, depending on how many students. We, you know, obviously, all close contacts are quarantined. However, for example, today, we did have students, a student that was COVID positive, we did identify close contacts. And because of the sheer number, we just determined it to be best in order to close the entire cohort. Now, that not, was not necessarily based on all of the tests of everyone. That was just us. Again, we always want to be overly cautious. So there may be times in which we're closing a cohort, and that doesn't mean all of the students in that cohort have tested positive or even identified as a close contact. It's because we're trying to make sure that we are doing our due diligence and maintaining any cases or mitigating any spread.
Okay. And the other one on COVID is, I think there may be some misunderstanding. I understood it. I thought I did, but I didn't want to answer this question. Will parents be asked again, even if they said yes or no, to the testing? Would they have the opportunity to answer that question again on the day that that would happen? I think no, if you said yes, it's yes. And if you said no, it's no. But no one seemed to be able to answer her question, so I would like you to answer that tonight, please.
Yes, absolutely. So we are utilizing those surveys that we got in to give us a guidepost. We have not actually started the testing yet. If there is a family that said yes that wants to change their answer, to please reach out to their school leader and let them know whether it's yes to no or no to yes. We have been, like I said, keeping sort of in, that's how we knew that the number went from 63% to 80%, is our families have been being very communicative and letting us know. We are willing to adjust, and so they just need to reach out and let us know. But we are using their initial surveys to determine if they wanted those tests.
And that was the answer that this person brought from the principal, that they could change it. But then I got the call saying, but what if I decided that day and I don't even know? Well, I know that they tested my child that day. None of it really happened.
That's a great question. And another thing we can do just to make sure all families feel comfortable is, is we can ask school leaders before that happens, you know, to just send out a quick email or message, letting them know that for your particular school, that the testing will be happening today or tomorrow. So to please let us know that, again, we are deferring to the answer that you have provided us, but if that has changed, to please reach out.
Probably a good idea, but that is probably a good idea. One more question, and that is, what if a parent wants a child to actually go hybrid? They want to send their child to school two or three full days, and then they want to keep them remote? How, if it's allowable, how would they work this out? Is it through admin, through their school principal? If it's allowable, how would it work?
So that is a great question. I have...
And I'll tell you why the question came up.
Yeah.
Because of working parents. And it was, it's still very hard to juggle. So that's why the question actually came up.
Right. So we actually have not yet gotten that question or answered that question. I think we've been sort of focusing on the in-person or the remote, especially because, again, we want to keep our cohorts very clean. As soon as you start introducing and you know, you know, reintroducing students in and out of a cohort, it definitely does make the contact tracing more difficult. Then you have a student who you know is not always in that cohort, is sometimes in that cohort. So I think at this point, we've really been keeping it very discreet of either in-person or fully remote. Now that you bring that up, we could potentially consider, but I would still say that we would need some time to, again, sort of get our feet under us, make sure that we are, we are following all our processes and protocols, we aren't having any hiccups, and then we could potentially consider it. But at this point, we are sticking with just in-person and remote.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, to me, that's something that would need to be looked at because of all those reasons on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
Because we've come this far. So thank you. Thank you all for indulging me with all my questions. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank everybody that's been using the raise the hand function. I certainly appreciate it. And when you're complete, could you please lower your hand? Any other questions at the superintendent's point? Seeing none, thank you for the update, and we can move on to the next piece of business, please.
Wonderful. So the second item is the approval of the following grants. The first is the Financial Literacy Planning and Implementation Grant for $10,200. We will be using the funds to run a seven-week Saturday program at Everett High School. This seven-week program hopes to sort of expose if there are students, expose students to institutions and important concepts that are involved in finances that a lot of young people don't normally get exposure to. So over the seven weeks, students will get to explore which careers they might envision for themselves, and then use those career choices to understand the different things that they must sort of go through and consider in pursuit of their career. So the funds will be used to cover a stipend for the financial literacy teacher, guest speakers, and supplies to run the program.
I'll make a motion to accept the grant.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to accept the Financial Literacy Planning and Implementation Grants. Give a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, ten and affirmative, you have approved. Next item, please.
Thank you. So item B under item number two is the FAFSA Completion Opportunity Grant. So approval of that grant, which is for $15,000, will be using the funds to hire a consultant and to stipend teachers to have one-on-one sessions to help support our students in submitting their FAFSA applications and also providing supplies in order to do so.
I'll make a motion to accept the FAFSA grant.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded to accept the FAFSA grant as presented for $50,000. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Leeson.
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, ten and affirmative, you have accepted the FAFSA grant. Item number three, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you so much. So item number three is the approval of the following scholarship donations. So now A is Patrolman Glenn G. Bryley Scholarship, sent by Janine Bryley. The second one is the Let's Give Back Scholarship, sent by Pina Daniel, class of 1998. And C is the Culinary Scholarship in Memory of Keith Mangan, sent by Brittany O'Leary.
I'll make a motion to accept the grant and send a letter of thanks.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is made and seconded to accept the scholarships and send a letter of thanks. I would also ask that you forward the information to Ms. Maloney, who's the scholarship night coordinator. And that's probably going to happen in May. Roll call vote, please, to take these items collectively.
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, ten and affirmative, you have accepted the scholarships, and thank you, Madam Superintendent, item number four.
Thank you. Item number four is the approval of the EPS and ETA MOU for returning to schools.
Okay, so we've seen the copy of this earlier today. Any questions? If not, I detained a motion.
Make a motion to approve the EPS and ETA MOU for returning to schools.
Second.
Second motion.
Motion is made and seconded to accept the approved public schools and Everett Teachers' Association MOU for returning to schools. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi. Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, ten and affirmative, you have approved the MOU.
Thank you so much. So Roman numeral six is items submitted by school committee members. So number one is a request to bring forward a staff member of the French Consul and the bilingual programs coordinator of the Brockton Public Schools to present regarding developing French immersion program in Everett. And this was submitted by school committee member Mayor Di Maria.
Ms. Janet Maria. Is the French consul on? Is he on? Yes, he is. There he is.
I'm here.
I would like to invite Noah before the school committee to do a presentation.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to invite Mr. Noah Wolet to the meeting. Just a thumbs up, please. Thank you. Welcome to the school committee, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me. Good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna share my screen, if that's okay.
Please.
Can you all see that? Thank you.
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much for having me this evening. Some of you may know that we've been in discussion with the Everett Haitian Community Center, as well as the mayor, for some time now, talking about the idea of bringing a French dual-language program to Everett Public Schools. So I just want to take a little time to discuss briefly the trend of French dual-language in the country, a little bit about the support that can come from the French Embassy and the consulate. And then we also have Kelly Jones, who's the bilingual programs coordinator at Brockton. And they opened a French immersion program in 2018, so she's going to briefly discuss the experience that they had as well. So I'm sure most of you probably are familiar with the idea of dual-language. It's pretty simple. It's when students take classes in both English and a second language. So these are not foreign language classes. These are classes such as math, science, or history, but that are taught in the second language. So that becomes the medium of instruction as opposed to a foreign language. So this is a trend that's really taking off throughout the country. There's a lot of states that are pursuing policies to promote it at the statewide level, especially Utah, Louisiana, North Carolina. And it's really becoming a bigger trend as the world becomes more globalized, and there's realization that multilingualism is an increasingly important asset for students. Obviously, the main benefit of a dual-language program is that students develop a much stronger proficiency in the second language as opposed to students following the traditional world language track. But there's also additional non-linguistic cognitive benefits. And there's a great institute, the University of Minnesota, called CARLA, the Center for Advanced Research on Language Acquisition, that has studies on all different types of concerns that people might have about dual-language. Especially, one of the big concerns is, you know, what will happen to their English proficiency. And there's lots of different studies showing that it actually can help their proficiency as opposed to the contrary. So I definitely suggest, if you have any interest with the studies on that, to Google CARLA, the University of Minnesota. Obviously, dual-language can be in many different world languages. We're focusing right now on French, because I'm from the French consulate. Just a little context about the French language. It's one of the fastest-growing languages in the world. Currently has 300 million speakers, has projected to reach 750 million by 2050, and that's largely thanks to strong population growth in Sub-Saharan Africa. One thing a lot of people don't know is the largest French-speaking country is not France. It's actually the Democratic Republic of the Congo, with about 80 million people. So it's a very geographically diverse language, Europe, North Africa, Sub-Saharan Africa, and then, of course, the Americas, Canada, Haiti, French Ghana, and then some other places in the Caribbean. Just a little detail on France, because I'm from the French consulate. There's about $110 billion in annual trade between France and the United States, and 1 million jobs created by foreign direct investment between the two countries. So why French in Everett? This has really come from discussions that we've had with Milan De Rosier, the head of the Everett Haitian Community Center. So as you know, there's a significant Haitian community in Everett. And we know that there's already an interest by the community in early childhood French education, because they've started at the Haitian Community Center an after-school French program, I believe in 2018 or 2017, which was the result of a survey that Milan had sent out to the members of that community, who wanted to make sure that in addition to Haitian Creole, which they were speaking at home, that the kids also learn French, which especially is important. For example, if they ever went back to Haiti to get jobs in the government or business in that area, learning, knowing French is very important. The center already has established partnerships with institutions that could, you know, help if there was ever a dual-language program. They have a partnership with Harvard University for teaching assistance for the after-school French program. They participate in Francophone celebrations that the Center for the American Francophone runs every March. They also have a strong partnership with the French Heritage Program, which is an initiative of the French Embassy and a private foundation called the FACE Foundation to support Francophone immigrants learning French as an after-school program. And last but not least, we have fairly strong relationships with local French companies in the region. SinoP is the seventh-largest pharmaceutical company in the world. Their US headquarters are in Cambridge. Dassault System, they're an engineering company headquartered in Waltham. Kales, they operate the tea actually in Boston. Those support them, or as French school located in Cambridge. So it's a brief overview of the dual-language network. There's about 173 French dual-language programs across the United States, and over 30 programs have opened just in the past three years. There's a big acceleration happening right now. There are three programs in Massachusetts. Holliston, which is one of the first programs in the country that started. Milton started in the 90s. And then we have Brockton, which started in 2018, and Kelly will go into a little more detail about that. But as you can tell, most of them follow a sort of tapering-off model. So they start, Holliston has 100% besides gym class in French, and then it sort of tapers down through fifth grade. And then in middle school and high school, usually the kids who took the immersion track take advanced French classes as opposed, you know, more advanced French classes than those who took the traditional world language path. So our main support structure for schools that open such programs is the French Dual-Language Fund, which was inaugurated by the French president in 2019 when he visited New York City. It's funded through partnerships with different private institutions and private donors. And 63% of the funding for this fund goes to Title I schools. So the main part of the program, and I think Kelly will be able to discuss this more in depth and how they benefited from this, is the annual grants program. So it's up to $10,000 per So it's up to $10,000 per year per program to purchase pedagogical materials, create Francophone, create a Francophone environment, books, film screenings, things like that, professional development for teachers. And you can also potentially receive funds up to a year before starting the program. A school in New Hampshire actually received funds just to create a exploratory committee. And most of the schools in 2019, 2020 cycle, all three immersion programs received funding in New England. We also have a French teaching intern program. So this is $4,000 to host a native French speaker who's getting a master's degree in teaching to come to the school to work for a year as a French lang-, a native French-speaking teaching assistant. And so Holliston, they've taken advantage of this program, and they usually have two teaching interns at once. We also, the French Embassy operates a professional development institute during the summer. We really are interested in creating a network for all the French dual language programs in the country. And so this is one of the ways that we promote that. We also know that one of the main challenges in starting such a program is sourcing teachers who are qualified, both teach at the elementary school level and have strong French skills. So we have partnerships with 10 universities, and some of these programs are online for students who are looking for either a master's or a certification in immersion teaching. And last but not least, we have a separate program, which is separate from the French Dual Language Fund, which is called the French Getaways Program. And this is a program that the embassy runs where several times a year we'll bring a Francophone author, artist, or musician to come give a tour in various immersion schools throughout the country. So right before the pandemic, actually, we just had, we had a French children's book author come to the program in Holliston. So, you know, just, you know, one more example of the ways we try to support these programs, you know, and keep them as dynamic as possible. So I'm going to turn it over to Kelly now, because I think that will be also really helpful for you guys to see what it was like for them to kick off a program just three years ago. This is also my email address if you guys have any questions. All these presentation right here.
Okay, well, Mr. Woulet shares a screen. Entertainer motion to bring forward Ms. Kelly Jones.
So move.
Second.
Are those in favor? Just thumbs up. Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Jones.
Thank you for having me, and congratulations, Priya. It's nice to see you again. No, Everett's very lucky to have you as a leader in English learning education. So Noah, I can share my screen, so I'm just going to share it. So Noah asked me to bring it up. That's the, let's see here. Oh, I think I, hold on. There we go. Sorry. Can you see my screen now?
You and the camel? Yes.
No, hopefully you're seeing, seeing my slideshow now, not my trip to Egypt.
We can see it.
Okay. So Noah asked me to come and talk a little bit about what the process Brockton took in order to expand its dual immersion programming. Brockton had a, has had a Spanish two-way program since about 2002. So almost 20 years, we've had a two-way program that goes from K through 12. And Brockton has a long history of understanding the benefits of dual immersion programming. I'm not going to go through them all again, but, you know, not only is it a proficiency in two languages, participants have enhanced levels of meta-linguistic skills, understanding how language works. There are enhanced college and employment opportunities once school is completed. There is the development of intercultural and international communication skills. So there are all of these, these benefits associated with dual immersion programming. The goals of immersion programs are being able to listen, speak, read, and write in two languages while simultaneously developing academic achievement in two languages. So they're learning math in French and English. They're learning science in French and English. They're learning social studies in French and English. At the same time, they're developing the appreciation and understanding of the speakers of those languages. So in our French program, they're studying the whole Francophone world and the cultures and achievements of those communities as well. So we had a longstanding Spanish program, but Brockton really wanted to take and take a stand and promote equity in dual language programs. Often, or sometimes, dual immersion programs are available in, in communities where there's not a great linguistic diversity already. And Brockton has, has a lot of linguistic diversity, a lot of skills right in our community that we wanted to capture and build upon to help create and develop leaders of the 21st century. So we wanted to use the skills that they already had in order to, to develop academic achievement. So what we did is in 2002, we convened a team called the District Capacity Project. It was a joint labor management program. So there were representatives of the school committee, there are representatives of the student of the superintendent's office, as well as the union leadership as well. So there were three tiers, the, the, the union, the leadership, and the school committee working together to try to see how can we develop programming for English learners and others. So what we did is we, we did community surveys, and we did them in open houses, Title I breakfast. We had our Parents Academy events. We did a staff survey, and we had a survey on the website. And we looked at what are the variety of languages that they may be interested in in Brockton. And you can see that overwhelmingly, the responses were that they would, that they would enroll their child in a dual language lottery if they were so eligible. And we did it by, by different languages as well, and it was very common to have Portuguese, yes. French, yes. An expansion of the Spanish one, yes. So we knew that there was a lot of community interest in this, in this project. So in the spring of 2015, we convened a planning group to look at kind of what, what are we gonna have to contend with when we launch it? This comprised of teachers, we, and counselors, paraprofessionals, our bilingual community facilitators, and school, school and district administrators, excuse me. So we had a wide range of stakeholders involved in the project. We organized ourselves to think about the staffing, the schedule, and the organizational structure of the program, the curriculum of the program. We wanted to kind of have, have partnerships with the community internationally as well as funding. How are we going to ensure that this is something that is sustainable long-term? So we developed partnerships, local institutional partnerships. There are organizations like Matsal Mabe, the Utah State Department of Education, was really supportive, as well as Cape Verdean Association, South Shore Haitians, United for Progress. We, we connected with the international consulates. The French consulate has been really supportive of our AMITIA program and is really, and I could talk a little bit about kind of how they've supported the program. And then we could, we connected with our community partners as well. So now we have three programs. Fast forward years later, we have our Juntos program, which is our Spanish two-way program that goes K through 12. We have our Unidos program, United in Language. That's our Portuguese program that's currently in grades K through four and is expanding every year, and soon we'll have a K through 12 strand. And then we have the AMITIA program. This is our French program. And this is currently is in grades K through two and expanding each year. There, there were some things that we did, I think, that really kind of, it was an investment in the program, and it really sustains it over the years despite COVID. We're, we're taking a gradual approach. We are growing the strands each year. We have a system for lottery for each kindergarten class. So kind of, so kids enter in kindergarten and they go through the, through the grades. There's a dual language information session and lottery. And after that, if they want to be in the program, they have to sign a commitment letter indicating that they are committed to this program through grade five. We house all of the programs in the Mathala George Junior School of Global Studies, and, and transportation is provided. We wanted to make sure transportation was not a barrier for participating in the program. So transportation is provided. There is a dedicated language acquisition coach in the building to support the, the growth of the program, instructionally and in terms of curriculum. And, and if space allows, this provides opportunities for new immigrant students who are already proficient in the language to be able to continue that important native language development if their space allows. So we, you know, sometimes families move away, and we have a space. And then if we have a student for whom they are able to participate in the target language side, they are able to do so. The, the, the French consulate has been really supportive. They, we have attended a, a seminar series at, in Washington DC with the French Embassy. I think that was in 2018. We've had FACE grants that has really supported us, particularly with, through COVID, because we were able to target that grant to purchase online digital materials to support the AMITIA program during the remote learning, as well as we've had teachers participate in the dual, dual immersion PD in France in the summer. And these are our wonderful students at our lodge. And there, there you go. That, that's kind of the process that Brockton put. I will, I will put my email address in the chat so you can all have it. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
Any questions of the guests? I have one. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
The Mathala George Junior School, is that a dual language school?
Yes. So we're growing it. What we're doing is that no students, few students were displaced. What we did is that we enrolled the kindergarten in that school. And as children are growing and exiting that school, the dual immersion school, the students are growing into the school. What we felt is that we felt that this school would provide a nice vision for dual immersion for global citizenry and to really target those, the, the love of language, the love of culture.
Okay, understood. And what, what grade levels is that school service?
It's K to five. The, the Spanish Juntos program is currently in the K to five strand. The Unidos Portuguese program currently is K to four, and the AMITIA program is currently K to two. So next year, it'll be K to three with a full Portuguese strand of K to five, a full Spanish strand K to five.
Okay, so you have a, a soul building dedicated to dual language learning?
We do. We did not have that when it was just one program, the Spanish program. This was something that we, and we didn't decide that right away. We had our, our Spanish, our Unidos Portuguese program in another school. But when we decided to launch the French, we thought it was a nice, kind of a nice approach to, to, to say that, you know, we, we want to dedicate the resources and the efforts to an entire school community.
Okay. And Everett participates in the Seal of Bilinguacy? Was Brockton was one of, was one of the beta, beta communities, weren't they? Like one of the first? Okay, before it was introduced to the entire Commonwealth, correct?
Yes. So we piloted it. We, we have pathways as well in grade five and grade eight, as well as the Seal of Bilinguacy at the high school.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you. Those are my questions from the chair. Is there anybody else at this time? I'd like to speak of, even one of our guests. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. McCaffrey. Mrs. Murray. Mrs. McCaffrey, Murray.
I had two questions. Do I sound okay from over there?
You do.
What percentage of your student population, K to five, take advantage of the dual, of your overall population in Brockton, are able to take advantage of the dual education program? And also, you have a student mobility issue similar to ours. And is there a way for students who are monolingual to plug into this program if they come at a later grade, or are they sort of boxed out due to the fact that they don't have the language background to plug in?
So, so it is a lottery. We, we basically, if you think about it, we have two teachers per grade, per language. And so there are six teachers, and say there are, you know, 25 per class. That's 50 per, per strand, per grade. So that's 150 kids are, are in the program, entering in kindergarten. And it is a lottery, and we do have waiting lists. So, so families come in, they register. Our Spanish program is a two-way program, which means 50% of the population are native Spanish speakers. 50% of this population are native English speakers. In our Portuguese and our, our French program, we don't necessarily have the largest number of, of native proficient speakers of French and Portuguese to be able to enter it. But it does turn out generally to be a third, a third, a third. Generally, a third of our students are native speakers of that language. A third of those are heritage speakers or speakers that have that language as an influence. So for our Portuguese program, there are some Cape Verdean families who choose to, to join the program or Haitian families who choice the program. And then about 50, then about a third are monolingual English side. So, so while, while we don't have that separation between the, the language speakers in our, in our, that we have in our Juntos program, the two other programs, it generally comes out to a third, a third, and a third. So in terms of wait lists, we, we have a policy that the school committee voted on that generally after, after the end of first, the middle of first grade, then monolingual English speakers are not able to participate unless they have been, they're transitioning from another dual language program because that the, the target language skills are such that it's really needed. What we do do is because each building has dedicated ESL teachers, we do take, if, if there is space, we take native speakers of those languages who are newly arrived to the United States. So let's say we have a, you know, we, we have a growing population of Africans, Africans who speak French. So let's say we have a family who arrives to our community in, in grade four. And right now, their, their only option is, is our structured English immersion program. But if we have space and they, they are proficient in French, they can join that AMITIA program and then have their English targeted through the building ESL teacher. So, so it gives some opportunities for, for newer, newer arrived communities. So, so it, it gives some opportunities for, for newer, newer arrived, uh, community members as well, if space allows.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any other further questions of, uh, my guest? Uh, I recognize the superintendent.
Hi. So I actually don't have a question. I just wanted to, um, you know, thank Noah for coming here tonight and also thank Kelly. And I see Vola Rumas on the call as well. Um, I've actually had the incredible good fortune of being able to visit the Brockton programs when we were implementing dual language programs um, in the Boston Public Schools. And we really looked to Brockton, as many districts do, as sort of those who have spearheaded these programs, who've really been such visionary, so innovative in this work. And so I just want to thank them so much for being here tonight. This is definitely a topic that is very, uh, close to my heart. And I think that, you know, again, it is just such an incredible advantage to be able to provide to all of our students because it not only recognizes the linguistic, um, asset that many of our students already come with, but it really also provides that to our native English speak, speakers. So that they can, I mean, it truly is a, the, the greatest 21st century skill. It is, it makes them very globally competitive to be able to have two languages when they exit into the workforce. So I just want to thank you guys again for being here tonight. I really appreciate it.
I, i- if I might, I'd just like to end by saying that, you know, Brockton made, made a decision that I think was really powerful. Oh, and Vola is still here. Vola Rumas is my, um, coordinator of the dual language programs in Brockton. We couldn't do it without her. But in, in twenty, twenty sixteen, when we launched the, the, uh, Portuguese program, our district said something very powerful. They said, being bilingual, biliiterate is important. The communities of our, of our district are important and they are so important. We want everyone to have an opportunity to learn those languages. And then in 2018, they said, it's so power, it's so important, we're going to dedicate an entire school so that, so that we can capitalize on the linguistic assets of our communities and build skills needed for the 21st century. It's a really, it's a powerful story.
Okay. And, uh, I, I want to thank you both for coming. Um, I mean, I, I think timing is perfect as we look to expand and, uh, to grow the heritage language programs. Um, I certainly had mentioned this to superintendent, you know, a year ago about the possibility at some point of ever having a dual language school. And, um, you know, and here we are in Everett, uh, we have a bilingual superintendent of schools or bilingual mayor, uh, who both understand the importance of having that second language compounded, you know, with the ability to, to communicate extremely well in English. So, um, with that, um, great piece tonight and, uh, and thank you for your time. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to, excuse you with our customary thanks.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you.
Just move. All right. Thank you. I was in favor. Thumbs up. Okay. Um, so, um, uh, I'll, I'll look to the mayor. Is, is there a, a motion that you would like on, to do with the item, please?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um, maybe I can refer this to the superintendent and we can further have a conversation and maybe, uh, maybe convene that committee of the whole eventually. Um, um, maybe invite the, the, the group that came this evening before us back to us again. Um, but I would, I think the superintendent has some great experience with this endeavor. So, uh, if, if, if the superintendent is fine with that, I'll, I'll refer it back to her and refer it to her and then we can discuss this as we continue to discuss everything else that we're discussing these days. Sound, sound good?
I'll second.
Okay, great. We have a, uh, uh, motion to make a second to refer this item number one to the superintendent. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor Di Maria, for bringing this up. This is amazing. I'm so, I'm so pleased.
Mr. Panarisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, ten and affirmative. You have, um, referred us to the superintendent's schools. Uh, next item, please.
Thank you so much. So item number two is a request to invite the Student Advisory Committee as a, as a whole. Uh, this was submitted by school committee member, Ms. Samantha Lambert.
Mrs. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion. And, uh, so we have Ms. Lewis with us, but to invite the other members of the Student Advisory Council. No, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay. So just, um, for clarification, you want to invite them to, to our next meeting? What is introduction or is part of the, the quarterly, uh, meeting or?
Um, they're here. They.
Or you want to invite them tonight?
They're, they're present right now.
Okay. Uh, okay. So the motion is made a second to invite the remaining members of the Student Advisory Committee for us. Um, just a thumbs up. Okay, so moved. Um, maybe if you could, uh, Mrs. Limited, um, introduce who these members are, please?
Certainly. Um, so as you meant, there's Ms. Dinah Lewis. I believe um, Brooklyn and Andrew, if I saw earlier, were unable to attend. Um, but if the other two members would like to introduce themselves briefly to the rest of the committee? Uh, Jane?
Hi, everybody. Um, so my name is Jane O'Dari. I'm in the eleventh grade here at Ever High School. And I think that the school committee is important because it gives people the ability to have their, well, not people, but students, um, the ability to have their voices heard when a lot of the time students don't think that they're being heard too. So I think this gives them like the outlet to be able to reach out and share their opinions.
Thank you, Jane and Jaylen.
Hi, my name is Jaylen. I'm ten grade and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. And Ms. Lewis, I know that you, um, did meet with Mr. McCarthy as well to start to formulate some of the work that you want to accomplish and not just this school year, but as you go into next school year. So if you'd like to just share with the committee, um, some of what you're working on and what we look forward to expect?
Um, I actually would like to, um, re- reiterate, um, our mission, like as a team. So we want to first ensure, um, that all opportunities presented, um, are accessible to all students. Um, not just some students, but every, every single student. And we want to amplify the student voice, um, so that equity could be felt and seen within the community. And finally, we desire to see effective change and we, um, continue to diligently a- advocate for the unseen, you know, people who don't necessarily have the opportunity to have a voice, but you know, this is a great opportunity to really, um, you know, take our experiences and take, um, the voices of students that, you know, don't have the opportunity to do so. So I'm happy to be here. Thank you for having, thank you for having me.
It's our pleasure. Um, and along with that, have you discussed, um, ways that we can better engage student voice and amplify student voice?
Um, not necessarily at the moment, but we're working on, um, there's certain thing right now. So once that gets out, then we'll have more information on that.
Thank you. And I will turn it over if any of my colleagues have any questions.
Any questions of our guests? Mrs. Murray.
So, Ms. Lewis, um, as a parent of some older children in Everett Public Schools, not quite high school yet, but older. Um, I'm a little jealous that some of the younger kids might be able to do a dual enrollment program. What did you think of that presentation? Do you think it would be well, well received by the students and families? What do you think about the idea of a lottery system? At least initially to, um, provide equity? What do you, do you, do you mind sharing?
Um, so just to clarify, you're talking about, um, the bilingual program, French program. Um, I honestly like the idea that, um, we're, you know, teaching the little kids at a young age and how like there's also, you know, different cultures emerging, like it's on, it's not only from like the French, you know, the French, um, country, but it's also like from other, um, cultures or other continents. So I really like how, um, like how diverse they make it or how they offer it to, um, students of that age, you know?
Thank you. And I'm sorry if I put you on the spot. I didn't mean to.
Okay. Um, anybody else would, um, have any, any comments, any questions? Okay, seeing, uh, no, the hands raised. Ms. Lamitt, you had your piece?
Um, I make a motion to refer back to sponsor.
Okay, motion is made a second and refer back to, uh, sponsor. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yeah.
Mr. Panarisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, ten and affirmative. Is you on a negative? Thank you, Mrs. Lambert, for the back to sponsor. Madam Superintendent, next item, please?
So item number three is a request to invite colleagues to sign on to a letter of support to our state delegation in support of SD twenty fourteen and HD thirty-three forty-one and act relative to anti-racism, equity and justice in education. So this was submitted by school committee member, Ms. Samantha Lambert.
Mrs. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I wanted to ask my colleagues that, so these two bills came to my attention, um, as I was going through the mass legislature site. Uh, but they caught my attention because as we have begun our own work to look at culturally responsive, um, and and culturally accurate, uh, curriculum, I know that there have been some challenges with the standards and making sure that the curriculum we choose fit within this. So part of this bill, um, is to make sure that it's reviewed by a committee that is represented by multicultural, um, representatives from, uh, the AAPI community, uh, the Black Caribbean community, Native American, and, and to make sure all those voices are at the table to review it and make sure it is, um, factually accurate. So I wanted to invite any of my colleagues as school committee members to, uh, send a letter of support, uh, which I will draft and share with you, um, to our state delegation. And I did send that over earlier. So if anybody had any questions after reviewing.
Okay. I, uh, I would actually, uh, entertain a motion that the Everett School Committee, um, supports uh, Senate twenty fourteen and House thirty-three forty-one.
Uh, I'll second that motion.
Oh, can you make it?
Uh, okay. I'll make a motion that the entire body, uh, signs on, uh, on support of this, which is the same bill, but on the Senate side and on the House side. Correct, Ms. Lambert?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So the motion is made in second that the Everett School Committee supports, um, this legislation. And, uh, if we were to vote favorable, uh, Mrs. Lambert would draft a letter for us to sign and send to our respective, um, delegation, correct?
Correct.
With, okay, great. So the motion is made in second before us. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Actually, can I ask a quick question before I vote? Would Ms. Lewis be able to sign on as well, even though she cannot vote?
Sure, why not?
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Uh, yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yeah.
Mr. Panarisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Yes, ten and the affirmative. You have moved for favorable action. Thank you, Mrs. Lambert. And, uh, item number four.
Thank you so much. So item number four is to review the open meeting law complaints submitted by Mr. Stephen Fitzgerald on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-one and on March ninth, twenty twenty-one. And this was submitted by school committee member Chairman, uh, Frank Parker.
Uh, first, if I can entertain a motion, uh, from the, uh, from the body to amend the February twenty-first, two thousand twenty, twenty-one to February second, twenty twenty-one. So move.
Second.
Okay, so motion to be first to amend, um, from February twenty-first to February second. Uh, roll call vote on the amendment, please? Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, ten and the affirmative on the amendment. Thank you. So, um, we actually have, um, three open meeting, open meeting, uh, law complaints filed against us from Mr. Fitzgerald. And tonight I'm here to discuss two of them. Uh, we will discuss that they went to a later point. I have shared with you both complaints and I also have shared with you today, uh, what our, our response is intended to be. Um, we feel that, um, I feel and, and, and constantly, Ms. Canty, who is an attorney, uh, believed that, um, one of the complaints is without merit and that we actually, um, adhere, comply, um, to all the faults that he's listed. Uh, and the second one, which concerns school council meeting, uh, notices, uh, we actually think this has merit. Uh, we had the opportunity along with Ms. Canty, myself and the superintendent to look at those, um, those postings and, uh, well, Mr. Fitzgerald brought up as far as like Zoom links and, 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 and actual locations of meetings was absent from the posting. So, uh, Mr. Mr. Fitzgerald, we want to thank you, um, for bringing that to our attention. We believe it's a, uh, it, it's a training moment um, for us and for the school councils. And so, uh, with that, um, I would ask the body, um, i- if you had a chance to review our responses, um, to vote, I would entertain a motion, um, that we favorably accept them and we respond accordingly.
So moved.
Second. Okay. So the motion made in second to, um, accept the responses as compiled by the, uh, administration, me as chairman, and to, uh, respond accordingly. Uh, roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows. Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria. Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, uh, that's eight in front of your move for favorable action. Thank you. Uh, Madam Superintendent, subcommittee reports?
Thank you so much. Um, and before we do move on to Roman numeral seven, I do just want to state, I want to also, uh, thank Mr. Fitzgerald for bringing this up. I will take responsibility for the fact that we have not, I, when we did, uh, move to our remote environment, we certainly, uh, kept a very close eye on how we were, uh, posting these particular meetings. But as far as the posting of the school council meetings, that is definitely not something I, you know, had my eye on. And I definitely admit that that is an area of growth for me. So we are, um, putting in a corrective action plan. We will make sure that we are keeping our eye on that in the future. And I just wanted to thank him for bringing that to our attention. So Roman numeral seven is the subcommittee reports. We had two subcommittee meetings. Uh, the first is the Committee on Finance and Negotiations on Tuesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM.
Okay, uh, meeting on the committee negotiations, uh, Mrs. Lambert.
And I'm, make a motion to accept the committee report as in place on file.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to accept the committee report as written and placed on file. Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows. Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yeah.
Mr. Panarisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ten and the affirmative, zero and negative. You have accepted the report and placed it on file.
Thank you. Uh, subcommittee report number two is the Budget Committee of the Whole, which occurred last Monday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, at six-thirty PM.
Okay, I'll, I'll tackle this one. So if, I'll make a motion to accept the, the, um, the minutes as, as written and, uh, placed on file.
I'll second that.
I need someone to actually make the motion and then second it.
So move.
Second.
Okay, so motion is made and seconded to, uh, accept the minutes as written and placed on file. Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ten and the affirmative, zero and the negative. You have accepted the meetings and, uh, placed one file. Um, I, looks like the next item of business would be Roman numeral eight.
Yes, so our final item of business this evening is Roman numeral eight, which is bills and payrolls.
Um, can I recognize, um, Mrs. Lambert?
Thank you. I will make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-six cents.
Okay. Second. So the motion is made in second to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-six cents. Um, roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ten and the affirmative, zero and the negative. You have approved. Mrs. Lambert?
I make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to, uh, pay bills and payrolls in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-six cents. Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi? Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, um, ten and the affirmatives, zero and the negatives. You have moved favorable action to pay bills and payrolls. Um, there's nothing left on the calendar. If I can before we adjourn, um, this school committee and the administration has taken a stand that, uh, we have asked that MCAS be suspended. Uh, we did it by participating back in November at the, uh, Mass Association of School Committees Conference, and we voted as a body, um, stating that message. Uh, last week, the superintendent joined with other urban superintendents,